Well, thank you. This is the Committee of the Whole Board meeting on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. It is Thursday, September 23rd, 2020, 2021, excuse me. I show a quorum, four members here. So we are opening the meeting. We'll call it order. And let's have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now the point where we have community input, and I will read our script here. Real quick, I'll try to do this as best and fast as I can. The opportunity to speak to the Board is provided for members of the public who have comment to make about business of the Board. The Board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. As the Board strives to make the best decisions for the district, public input can be helpful. In order for the Board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and to operate its meeting in the spirit of civility and to quorum, speakers are expected to follow the following guidelines. Address the Board only at the time provided on the agenda and only after being recognized by the Board President. Identify yourself and be brief. Your comments must be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The Board may shorten this allowed time in order to conserve time to allow the maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. Please be respectful and courteous, and the Board requests that you do not make any statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to Board, to members of the Board or staff. The Board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during public comment period, but we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community. So with that, if anybody is here to make...
Melissa, did you have a comment? No? Okay.
Read that for nothing.
I do have some comments submitted electronically, so I will read those. There are three comments that were submitted by noon today, and just like in regular meetings, the Board has had access to these, and these will be posted on the website so that the community can see them.
Lawyer, about this topic?
About this topic, yes. Specifically, we now have a good question. We now have a sign up to submit comments for the Committee of the Whole meeting and a separate link for comments related to the regular meeting. So from Nathan Ollery, "I am pleased to see that the Board is dedicating, excuse me, dedicating time to diversity, equity, and inclusion training based upon the public comments of certain members of the Board last fall during public comments, public meetings, and email correspondence with members of the public. It is my hope that the future trainings include the specific topics of unconscious bias and implicit bias. It is important that our school leadership understand these topics as they work to make District 25 an inclusive school district." From Karen Joseph, "As the mother of three District 25 biracial students, I am happy to see this training happening. I hope it is just the beginning of real engagement in diversity, equity, and inclusion. I would like to see the entire Board continue to do the hard work of continuous learning and turn that into action, advancing DEI across the district. Thank you." And from Maria Zeller-Brower, "As the parent of a student in District 25, I am pleased to see that the school board members are participating in a training to strengthen our diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. I hope that these trainings continue and that all members of the school board continue to take an active role in these DEI efforts to make real change in our schools and our community. Thank you." And that is all of them.
All right. Thank you. We move on to the Superintendent Report, which the subject is Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and that's our training today. So Dr. Byne, I'll take, I'll let you take it away.
Thank you. And thank you, Board of Education, for requesting this training. I'm super excited for you to have the experience to work with Dr. Perry and Reverend Brooks today, and I know some of you have also been able to participate in either our staff professional development that they've facilitated for us or our community dialogues that they've also facilitated for us. Those have been really great transformational experiences for us in District 25 and really a great start in our journey in implementing the Board's policy about diversity, equity, and inclusion, as well as our strategic plan that the Board recently adopt, adopted. So tonight, Dr. Perry and Reverend Brooks will tell you a little bit about their background, but I'll just let you know, Dr. Perry is a PhD and attorney. She teaches for Northwestern University, has taught several other places, has a background in social psychology, and especially in how that interacts with the legal world. And again, she's done an exceptional job working with us. We've had some really courageous conversations in more comfortable ways than any of us had ever expected to. She has a lot of experience facilitating DEI trainings. Reverend Brooks, some of you may know, very active in Arlington Heights, and I want to make sure I always get the opportunity to say, he's been very transformational in my life. I've had the pleasure, over the last few years, to be a part of a group called Bridging the Black/White Divide that Reverend Brooks and many volunteers throughout Arlington Heights has organized, where it's brought leaders and community members from Arlington Heights together to have conversations in the areas of education, law enforcement, housing, you name it. And those have been life-changing conversations for me and for all of us that have been a part of that. And so they are here tonight to kind of start our conversation together. I encourage you to participate as we go along, and I think they will give us a really great insight on why DEI is something we should continue to commit ourselves to and how that impacts our organization moving forward. So Destiny and Clyde, I'll turn it over to you. A reminder that you want to turn your microphone on so that we can hear you.
Thank you so very, very much. Good evenings. Good to be with you. We've had some sessions with your parents and teachers, and I've been looking forward to tonight. You know, school boards across this nation are facing some challenges. I trust this Board is not accepting the same kinds of challenges, but I think my take is that those challenges to local school boards will not decrease, but will increase. And I'll share some reasons for that in just a little while. I'm so glad to be with my friend and colleague, Dr. Perry. She, I'm the baggage. She's really the messenger. She allows me to hang on to her skirt tail and say a few things, but as always, she, as Dr. Byne mentioned, she's been a professor at Drake University, Northwestern University, PhD, lawyer, research, major research for the American Bar Association and others. And I'm so delighted that she joined us about three years ago to head up our DEI efforts. So I'm going to say a few words about DEI, and then she will take over. Am I right? All right. I'm no stranger to education. I moved to Elk Grove Village 57 years ago in 1964. I suspect that's longer than most of you have been alive. You look so young, but I've been around for a little while, and I've been a resident of Mount Prospect but 14 years here in Arlington Heights. I've been a teacher at Harper College, St. Mary of the Lake Seminary, counselor at Crane High School, Hyde Park in Chicago. Ran for the school board at District 214 twice. I did not win, but I came in fourth out of eight candidates. That wasn't bad. That was in the 70s, and the 70s are a little different than now. So I kind of consider that a victory, but in those days, I had a goatee, I had big bushy Afro, but I still came in fourth. But I enjoyed going to the coffees and Jack Paul, if you remember, president of Elk Grove Village at the time, and Chuck Seddick, they were very influential in my life when I ran for the school board of District 214. I want to just say a couple of words about DEI. I've been involved in this for a number of years, and I don't quite understand it, but it, why it's controversial, why there's a lot of ambivalence, confusion, misunderstanding, and I hope Dr. Perry and I can clear up. Our approach is a little different than others who are involved in DEI, and I'll cover that too. I've been asked a number of times, how would I, in the fewest words, define DEI, diversity? And so I use the following three words: appreciation for diversity. I didn't say "the" diversity. Appreciation for diversity. Can you imagine going to the food store and only having, in the meat market, and only having hamburger? You know, you go there day after day, nothing but hamburger. I think we appreciate diversity in the meat market. Can you imagine going to the library and only seeing one book that's on Mysteries? That would be fun, wouldn't it? So appreciation for diversity. Now, I'm not naive. There are those who tend to use the word as a code word for those people, them people, you know, minorities, people of color. But as Dr. Perry will tell you shortly, yeah, those folks are included, but that's the wrong take on diversity. Appreciation for diversity. There would be no shots for COVID-19 if it wasn't for the difference. And we believe in the difference, that there are talents and skills and assets that can benefit society as well as the school board. Bob Galvin, who used to be chairman of Motorola, used to say, "Diversity is good business." I understand why. McDonald's would tell you, "Diversity is good business." So our approach is we look at DEI through the lens of business. The business of the school board is education, making sure that the young people in this district grow up to be successful and contributors to society. That's the business. That's how we see it. So the first thing we're saying is diversity is an appreciation of the difference, not the, of difference. Not just in skin color, but it has to do with religion, it has to do with handicapped senior citizens, whatever. Different, because I think within that difference, there are contributions to be made. The second thing I'd like for you to, I'd like to say to you, DEI is not a program. Now, I know it's been presented as a program, but it's not a program. DEI is a tool. If you decided to build a house, what are some of the tools that you would need? Hammer, saw, nails, right? That's what DEI is. It's a tool to help you, the Board, and the staff to build the best educational program possible. Always suggested is that diversity, that is the difference, the difference, and the difference, that is what you don't have, can contribute to the overall business goals of this district. DEI is not a social welfare program. It's not a program designed to promote any racial group. It's a program that is available to school boards and to others to help us do a better I want to say this in closing, that there is a business case for DEI. And I want to just paint one little one for you. We live in a changing world. I moved out here in 1964, farmland. It's not like it is now. You had to walk miles to find somebody that looked like me. I was the first African-American to move into Elk Grove. Different. But the change that will occur over the next 10 years will be twice as great as the change that I've seen. The young people in your district will go to District 214. Okay? Let me paint you a picture that they'll be walking into, why what we do is so important. We do know that in 25 years, 57% of the population of the United States will be people of color. That's a fact. In District 214, where our children, I say "our" because I don't have any youngsters in the district, but if you allow me to say "ours," of the six high schools, Wheeling has 65% of the student body are people of color. Elk Grove Village, 53% people of color. Harper College, nearly 55% people of color. It's changing. Of the six high schools in District 214, every one has a Latino and separately African-American student union. I went to one of their annual meetings, and I had no idea at the change and the growth. 10 years ago, one of, one out of every 10 students in 214 was on a government food program. One out of 10, 10 years ago. Today, it's three out of 10. My point is, we're preparing young people for a world that's going to be different and our grandkids than what we're going through. If you look at industry, McDonald's, Sears, Motorola, other major corporations that moved to our area, and I'd say "our" area, Northwest County, to hire skilled help, where are they now? Chicago. Who's coming to the Northwest? Small business. Whites are moving to the city in traditionally black and brown communities, replacing black and brown people who are moving to the area. I think you've been into our post offices in Arlington Heights, the displays, if you can't see the growing diversity, the banks, and there's nothing we can do about it other than appreciate and use it as a tool. And so in closing, let me just say, there are many ways that DEI is important in supplier diversity. Example, Dr. Perry and I are an example of supplier diversity. Now, we're not a minority organization. We're a not-for-profit, but let me just forget that for a second. The fact that you're doing business with a minority organization, that's what you call supplier diversity. So DEI applies to that. If your HR department is recruiting teachers, other staff, that's where DEI is. The beautiful thing is, it's a tool that you can use to improve whatever you think needs to be improved. Not what I think, not what outsiders, but what you think as members of the Board of Education. How about jabbered long enough?
Sure.
So in closing, I'm just simply saying three things. It's a tool. It's not a program. It should be part of every program and department. Secondly, as Dr. Perry will tell you, it's all about difference. Say, "Well, I don't want any difference." Well, then, we're in trouble. So it's there to help us. Dr. Perry, go right ahead.
So I just want to add a little bit to our thinking about the case for diversity. We don't have time today. There's a lot of detail we could go into about this, but if I can call your attention to the slide, I want to emphasize a couple of points, which is that the case for diversity really focuses on bringing different perspectives to the table. And of course, there are ways that diversity does get defined as related to specific identities, et cetera, but we do want to encourage a broader approach to thinking about what diversity is, how to measure it, how to capture it, and how to capture the value of it in your space in a way that makes sense for you, given your values, goals, priorities, and the people who are in this space. And diversity, there's been a lot of research on diversity, and that kind of builds the case, and that, what it shows over and over again is that what bringing different perspectives to the table does, what bringing people who are different in the room does, is it fosters better process, more thoughtful engagement with the material, it can make people feel better on the other end of their decision-making about the outcomes of their decision-making. So there's lots of research that shows that diversity is beneficial. It can be, it can admittedly make a process take a little bit longer. It can add tension and conflict, but the outcomes on the other end are better than situations where diversity is not, is either not present or it's not capitalized on. And again, diversity here in this context doesn't mean one particular type of social identity, one particular type of group. We're thinking about this broadly in terms of difference in perspective, experience, background, skills, et cetera. So in our community dialogues, we went through a little bit more detail about thinking about diversity as difference, but just wanted to highlight that point, and I'm happy, we are happy to share additional resources if that's, if that's something that you want to explore further as we, as you continue your journey here. So the other thing that I think is important to do as we start this session is to think about why it's important to have these conversations about diversity, equity, and inclusion, and why it's important to start your conversations with some discussion about what these ideas mean. So in my experience, working with organizations of various kinds and working in educational settings, et cetera, is that when people use the language of DEI, one, they, we start to collapse it immediately into an acronym, DEI, EDIB, ED, there's a lot of them, and they all are referring essentially, in theory, to the same thing, but we often don't take the time to discuss what we all think these concepts mean. And I think that tends to be, and in my experience, that tends to be the source of a lot of misunderstanding and miscommunication, because people aren't on the same page about what it is that they're talking about. So taking the time, and we're going to kind of prime this for you today, this is something that we spent two hours doing with three community dialogues over the last several weeks, but encourage you to think about what diversity as one piece, what equity as one piece, what inclusion as one piece means to you as individuals, to you as a school board, to you all as a district and a community. Because all definitions, whatever working definitions you want to adopt, should be yours. They should be ones that make sense for you as a body, you as a community, and as a district, so that you know that you have a shared language for having conversations going forward about what it is that you're referring to when you say, "Oh, we're pursuing diversity, we're pursuing equity, we're pursuing inclusion." And we often assume, for lots of reasons, that people are necessarily on the same page about what those ideas mean. We might assume that because we think, "Oh, we all live in the same community, maybe we have similar interests, our kids, we see each other all the time, our lifestyles seem similar." And yet, those conversations can reveal that people might assume they're on the same page, and someone might think wildly different from them. They might assume they're not on the same page with someone for various reasons, and through conversation, they realize, actually, we have a lot of common ground. So we want to get past that, you know, assumption about who does have a different perspective and engage with everybody around this in productive ways so that you can craft a definition and a set of definitions for these ideas in ways that make sense for all of you. So that's why I think it's important to have this conversation. Again, we're basically priming you to continue this conversation in our short time together today, but we hope that you'll, you'll be able to do that. So what I want to do next is actually present some slides, and these were ones that we used during the community dialogues, with some basic contours for definitions of what diversity, equity, and inclusion are. I welcome your comments and feedback and questions if you have them, so please don't hesitate to raise your hand or speak up if you have something. And what we did during the community dialogues is that we gave small groups of the folks who showed up each evening time to actually talk through what they thought it meant. So kind of, they took what I provided, and they had time to think about, what does this mean for our district? What does this mean for our community here in Arlington Heights? So we don't have time to do that part, but I'll at least give you the contours of the definitions. So when we think about diversity, what we tend to see when we think about diversity are images like this on the screen, where we have images of different-looking people, where we might, we can say, "Oh, this, this person appears to be a man, this person appears to be a woman, they are different racial and ethnic groups, different abilities, disabilities, et cetera." And the idea being that we tend to focus on things that look different, people that look different. So we also tend to focus on the numerical and the observable when we talk about diversity. We want things that can be counted. We often treat diversity in terms of categories or identities, and we don't often talk about them in ways that intersect with one another. So we're not as good at thinking about how our multiple identities intersect to create a special kind of diversity for each one of us who has multiple types of identities. But importantly, there has been a growing interest, and in some space, some people and spaces and organizations do this better than others in terms of taking a broader approach to thinking about diversity. So I want to call your attention to the graphic that's on this slide, to say that while we tend to, for various reasons, in our culture, talk about diversity in terms of race, or gender, or sexual orientation, or particular social identities, there is a way to think about diversity that is much broader than that, and it's a very helpful broadening to understand, again, diversity as difference, and then to think through all of the different ways that difference can show up in people who are in the space together. So what this colored wheel shows is we might think about, for example, diversity in terms of socioeconomic status and income, or educational attainment. In occupation, in a school, for example, we might think about what difference in perspective is created by having people who are teachers, people who are staff, people who are administrators, the parents that are in that space, et cetera. We can think about differences that are, that are related to people's mental and physical abilities, so not, not necessarily on the dimension of kind of ability, disability, but just that some people think differently, and move differently, and do things differently. So there is a way to think about diversity that is much broader than the way that we traditionally and typically talk about it. And we would encourage you to, as you think about what diversity means for District 25 and in Arlington Heights, to take this broader view and to catalog and consider, what are the types of diversity that we do have, maybe that we're not fully capitalizing on or valuing in this community? And there might be types of diversity that you would like to see more of, and that's great, too. And what we did in the community dialogues is we turned it over to the community members to say, "Okay, how do we think about diversity? Where do we see it in our space? And what are ways that we could value it more, capitalize on it? What are things we would like to see?" And people took a lot of different perspectives and were, I think, in many cases, relieved to not feel like they only had to talk about diversity through one lens. So I'll pause here to ask if there are any questions or comments about this, about this kind of broader definition of diversity. So the next piece is equity. So in DEI, the acronym that gets collapsed... So in DEI, the acronym that gets collapsed, it's important to understand diversity in terms of kind of representation, and the way that we tend to think about who's in the space, and what the represent, relative representation of various groups or characteristics, et cetera, are in a particular space. But when we move to thinking about equity, and in many cases, equity kind of comes up against or is kind of coexisting alongside questions about equality, but equity is the term that folk, people focus on more in terms of a DEI response, and I'll explain a little bit about that why with this graphic here. So when we think about equality, the focus of equality is sameness of treatment. And there are many circumstan, I, I'm, I come from law. Law, the idea of equality under the law is a very pervasive idea that runs through many aspects of law. And so the idea is that we want to treat everybody exactly the same in many respects or in many circumstances. But what, the equity part of DEI recognizes is that treating everybody the same under all circumstances may not actually allow everybody to fully participate at the same level, or have the same opportunity to achieve certain types of outcomes or success, et cetera. So we need both equality and equity, depending on the circumstances, in order to achieve our diversity, equity, and inclusion-related goals. So if equality is treating everybody the same in this graphic, what that looks like is, if we want everybody to participate in the bike race, an equality approach would say, okay, we'll give everybody a bike. So everybody gets a bike, but everybody gets the same bike. And as you can see from the image, that has different consequences for people based on their size, their ability, disability, et cetera. So if everyone gets the same bike, everyone is not able, in this circumstance, to participate fully, because the bike is a better fit for some people than for others. So an equity approach would say, and we might say, this is a situation that calls for an equity approach rather than an equality approach. An equity approach would say, look, we need, we need to have circumstances where sometimes we treat people differently, so difference in treatment, in order to create the opportunity for equality in outcome or opportunity. So in this case, we're treating, in a way, we're treating people differently. We're giving everybody a bike still, but we're giving people bikes that fit their needs, so that they can all participate in the bike ride. And that may mean, in some circumstances, that, for example, there are some bikes that are more or less expensive than other bikes, more or less harder to get than other bikes. But the idea is that if we invest that, those resources, and giving, meeting people where they are, giving people what they need, we can create the opportunity for everyone to be able to participate in a similar way. Not guarantee certain outcomes, not guarantee everyone's going to end up in exactly the same place, or that they're all going to win, they're going to cross the finish line at the same time, but that they at least have the opportunity to participate together. So when we think about equality and equity, we do want to think about the ways in which some circumstances might call for an equality response, sameness of treatment, and some circumstances might call, call for an equity response, one where we focus on, how much can we kind of create sameness of opportunity and access, so that people have the opportunity to achieve or certain outcomes or achieve success, at least without barriers created by us or in ways that we could prevent in some way. So again, in the community dialogues, what we did at this point is, we would turn it over to the community members and small groups to discuss, what is equity, what does equality look like in District 25, in our community? What would we like it to look like? And so we encourage you to consider those questions as you, you know, for yourselves, with your families, with your engagement with the district, and certainly in your work as a board. So I'll pause here and again, and ask if you have any questions on equity and equality definitions? Okay? Sounds good.
Mr. President.
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, you do, sorry.
Sorry. Hey, Dr. Perry, thank you for walking us through this portion of it. And I'm going to go one step back, you know, when you talked about, you know, what you did with the community, it was really enlightening. I had attended the community conversation, and the time that I was at the table, as a parent and as a board member, going, coming up with these common terminologies. Now, how would you recommend, our board does that, to come up with these common definitions, because it seems like it's really important? And so I know probably that's a Dr. Bynne question, and a question for you as well.
Yeah. And I would say, kind of, as Destiny said, they're kind of starting to lay the found, you know, the foundation for us, and then we could have some follow-up time together where we decide, let's take the next step, and let's do some more workshop on this.
And I think in general, I mean, obviously, you, there is such a thing as too much feedback and too, you know, you could, you could have endless conversations, especially with a larger and larger group, trying to come to some kind of 100% agreement about this. But the point is not to, that you have to reach 100% agreement, but that you figure out definitions, working definitions, for this body, for this district, that reflect what it is that you hope to do, and that allow people to have a common understanding. People may honestly sometimes still disagree personally with what the definition is that's adopted, but if it's, if it's created with feedback, people understand why this was the, you know, this is the definition that was adopted, at least people still have the com, they know that when the board, or when the district speaks on this, that they're using this definition. Because that helps clarify kind of what the perspective is, why you might be pursuing particular actions or initiatives, et cetera. So it's not, it isn't so much about everyone has to 100% agree, because that's never going to happen anyway. And that's true on definitions of lots of different things in our, in our world. So it's more about kind of taking into account who you are, your community, getting feedback, and developing definitions that make sense for you, given the work that you want to do and who you are.
And Dr. Bynne earlier used the term courageous conversations. I think just the exercise in itself will, will be helpful. Thank you.
Definitely. And sometimes I, you know, like, the conversations can be used to clear up misunderstandings or miscon, you know, misconceptions about what this person thinks or that person thinks. And it can create an opportunity for building rapport, building comfort around these conversations, because people also, I mean, if we're going to work in a diverse space, meaning there's people who have different perspectives, we all have to get better at practice, probably, at engaging with people who may not see things exactly the same way that we do, and being able to have productive conversations around that. Any other questions or comments at this point? Okay. So the last piece of DEI that we, that we hear is, is inclusion. So diversity and equity in many cases are more tangible and concrete and easy to measure. They can often, in ways, be counted, you can look at data, et cetera, that, you know, in terms of maybe distributions of resources, or you can literally count the demographics of people who are in your space, and you can kind of track whether you're, you're doing okay on diversity, equity, and inclusion on those dimensions by using that type of method. But inclusion is much more personal. And it often, the best way to measure inclusion is to ask people in your space, whatever that space happens to be, do you feel valued? Do you feel respected? Do you feel like you can participate? Do you feel included in the space? And when you know that you have achieved inclusion, means that most people in the space are able to say that. So when you, when you think about what inclusion is, you're thinking about, or when, and I think it's helpful to say, in order to understand what inclusion is, it's easiest for us to think about situations in which we have felt either included or not included. Because that is how we all experience inclusion. It's through usually our own lens of experience. So when people report times that they feel included, or that there's inclusion in a space, they might say, I feel valued and respected. I feel welcomed. I feel like I have a voice. I feel like my needs are met in this space, et cetera. And so when we talked about inclusion, I, what I, what I encouraged community members to do, and what I encourage you all to do, is to turn to your own experience, and to reflect on, what are situations in which you have felt that you were or were not included, and how do you do more to create those inclusive spaces for yourselves, for your children, for this district, for your community? And again, this is an area where you cannot reach 100% perfection. It's very hard to have a space where all the time, 100% of people feel included. But the point of this exercise in general is not perfection. It is to do better, to do as much as we can to improve the diversity we want to see in the space, to improve equity and increase equity, to improve and increase inclusion, and not to expect that we're going to reach 100% of all of our goals in all of these areas all the time. It's just very hard to do. So you don't have to beat yourself up about not being 100% perfect, but the goal is to see this as an ongoing project to make yourselves better. So with respect to inclusion, it's also possible that inclusion, in some ways more than the others, other two pieces, might be a bit of a moving target. So as things shift in the culture and environment of a particular space, that can mean that some people who felt included before don't feel included now. And so thinking about that, you, with all of these, you want to be constantly revisiting, what do we mean when we say diversity, equity, and inclusion? And what are our goals in this space? How do we want to measure or consider whether or not we're, we're kind of achieving success in these areas? So any questions about inclusion? Yes?
Just maybe a quick question, and if you're going to maybe get to it later on, then that's fine.
Yeah.
But, you know, knowing that inclusion is, like you just said, maybe a moving target, based on your experience with the other districts, what have other districts done to maybe increase or raise awareness of this, or just focus on it, in broad sense?
I mean, the starting point is often to measure. A lot of people haven't ever asked their communities or their organizations about whether people feel included. And I, I've certainly on the kind of business organizational side outside of educational institutions, have had some that say, this is a business, this is a workplace, who cares, right? So they may decide they don't want to measure it because they think it's not relevant to their work. But I think a lot of people haven't measured it because they haven't thought, like, this is something that's important to measure, alongside other things we think are important to measure. And so getting, you know, as much as you might ask for feedback on many things from parents, or from, maybe not necessarily as often from your elementary school students, but from older students sometimes, right? Then you can, you start by getting a sense of where you are, and whether people feel included, and you can collect information about what is making people feel that way or not feel that way. And then it's revisiting that. So I think you also can't just take one measurement, and if you're satisfied with the response, you're done. So a lot of times, what organizations, institutions will do, is they'll periodically revisit that. So it might be that they do an annual, so sometimes they do, call them kind of pulse checks. So they're very quick little surveys. It's not an extensive survey every single year, but a pulse check on, on certain major points you might be interested in, things like that, so that you're kind of regularly checking in. And I will say that a lot of times, just doing the checking in does some of the work. Asking people, do you feel included? How could we do better? What are we doing well? That can foster inclusion, a sense of inclusion. So getting people's feedback, asking people about their experiences. So doing the work can actually contribute to feed back into people's experiences in a positive way. So that's, I think that's the starting point in terms of kind of being able to measure it. Then when you have a sense of whether people are feeling it or not feeling it, you may then decide, or, and hopefully you've gotten some information, that might suggest what it is that you can do about it. But if you're measuring on a semi-regular basis, you'll be able to see if there start to be shifts, more people or less people are feeling it in various ways.
I'll share a district example. In Dr. Perry's slides, she has the quote from Verna Myers, that diversity is being invited to the party. And then another quote, inclusion is being asked to dance. And a situation, some of us were here for a handful of years, was an event where students with disabilities were absolutely invited to participate in that event, but when we got to the event, realizing some of them could not, because of their needs, truly participate. So it didn't have the inclusion that we thought we were maybe offering, because just being asked to come without making some equity adjustments for what they needed, may have had them invited and present, but not truly able to participate or to dance. So that was an experience that we learned from, that we have to understand who's coming and what do they need to truly participate.
And I think that also, that story highlights something that's also really important to make room for, which is, you will not be able to anticipate everything. You won't be able, you can't read people's minds, especially if you have people in the space who haven't traditionally been in the space, et cetera, or their voices haven't been part of the conversation before. You won't know necessarily how to predict what might make them feel included or not, or what inequitable response might be, and that's okay. So the point is, there are ways that you can gather that information to try to get ahead of things, but it's also about how you respond when you, when you realize, or someone comes, calls to your attention, that there is something that needs to be dealt with, or that someone wants a response to. And so it's okay to say, we are sorry, we didn't see this before, but we're going to do something about it now, and not beat yourself up about the fact that you didn't see it in the first place.
Dr. Perry, a follow-up question. So when you talk about these pulse, pulse checks and these surveys, I'm sure that you have tools that you could offer the district that are, the sense of belonging surveys, inclusive surveys, that would be helpful for us, so that'd be a great service for us.
Definitely. And, and all of these should be tailored, right? So the idea is also there, that you get some, a tool, but then there should be a little bit of work to make sure that it fits. Fits what you're after, fits your population, et cetera, so that you're getting the information that you feel like is actually relevant information, things that you need to understand about your community. Okay. So at this point, I want to move to thinking about decision-making more specifically. So one of the things that we thought about in terms of coming to a board, a decision-making body, is how to think about DEI and decision-making. And so the place that I always start in terms of thinking about DEI and decision-making is with ideas about how assumptions, expectations, biases, et cetera, can affect our decision-making, often in ways that we don't fully appreciate. And not because we're bad people, but because we're human, and we'll talk about, we'll talk a little bit about that.
Can I ask a question before you move on?
Yes, of course.
So if diversity and equity are largely quantitative and continuous, but inclusion is more of point and time qualitative and subjective, how do you actually create a solution that can stand the test of time, when it's always a point and time reaction on the inclusiveness or non-inclusiveness that an individual, or a group, or a team, or whatever feels? Because it, you won't necessarily ever be in the exact same position to get.
Right.
So I'm struggling with the, with the, the measurement and the best practice of that.
Yeah, definitely. So I think, I, I, I don't know, I would, that I would say it's only a kind of moment in time, because I do think that we do know that there are certain characteristics of spaces that might make people in general, sometimes regardless of various identities, but there are certain characteristics of spaces that might make people generally feel, if they at least perceive that in the space, generally feel like they're included, valued, you know, respected in the space. So there are general things that we can do and think, when thinking about the culture or the, the kind of climate of a space. And then there might be particular things we want to think about with respect to certain populations, people with certain backgrounds, et cetera, that we might want to consider if we understand or come to understand that, that different responses might be needed to, you know, to create a sense of inclusion for people who maybe haven't traditionally been in the space, there are many of them in the space, et cetera. So in that sense, I don't, I don't think it's completely kind of just moment in time, but it is fair to say that people's ideas about inclusion can shift. So I might, in time one, feel included in a space, and then when you measure me at time two, maybe something has shifted in the space. Maybe the population has shifted. Maybe there's something that ha, an event happened, or something happened, you know, in that space, to change how I felt about that. But I imagine, I don't know that this has been studied, but my kind of social scientist brain says that there's probably relatively some consistency in terms of where people stand, especially if you're measuring, you're not measuring, you know, five years apart, or something like that. So in that sense, I think it's a combination of thinking about, generally, what are things that we think would make most people feel included? How do we create those things in the space? And then also, again, recognizing that you may need to tweak your approach, you may need to add things, you know, as you go along, that that's, it will be an evolving process, and that's okay. So I think it's a balancing of those two things. Does that help?
It does. So it goes back to, then, it goes back to your point of, you're never going to be able to achieve it at 100%. It has to be the continuum. It has to be the continuum of constantly trying to just improve upon a process.
Right. And I think it, you know, you may set goals. So you may say, I want, maybe we want ninety percent or ninety-five percent of, you know, whether it's our students or our parents or our teachers or whatever, whoever we're measuring to say, to have a particular response, right? To your pulse check or to your, your question. You can set that, you can set those kind of quantitative goals and then be thinking about if you're falling under it, what is, what is the reason you're falling under that goal? If you're achieving it, what do we need to continue to do to make sure that we stay up here? So I think there is a way that it can still be kind of quantified in a way. But it is, it is admittedly a little bit fuzzier in some ways than we often think about measuring and tracking diversity and equity. Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. So this, I, I like to start in terms of thinking about decision-making with this exercise. So this is an exercise, it's first impressions. And what I'm going to do is show you a series of photos. And all I want you to do as you look at the photos is to think to yourself for now. And some people like to take notes. So if you want to jot notes down, you can. Those will be private. Think about your impressions of each person that I show you. And so it might be helpful to think about it through the lens of, who is this person and what do I think this person is like? And I just want to pay you to pay attention to what comes to mind. And then we'll talk a little bit about why, why I like this exercise and why I think it's helpful as a starting point for a discussion about decision-making. All right? So there's eight photos. And I will signal in case you happen to be looking down or taking notes each time I change the photo. And then we'll, we'll discuss a little bit at the end. All right? So here's our first photo. Who is this person? What is this person like? Okay. New photo. Who is this person? What is this person like? Okay. New person? New person? Now too many people? This is four, yes, sorry. Got a little heavy-handed with the buttons. New person? Actually, there's two people here. So you can note about one of them or both of them, it's up to you. Okay. New person? A new person? And our final person who's going to stand out is different. And you may recognize them, but we'll talk about why include them. But if you don't, or if you want to think about what you think about this person, if you do, I'll give you a few moments. Okay. So I want to ask if you, if there's any of you who'd be willing to share, what are the types of things that you found yourself paying attention to about the people that I showed you? So you don't have to call out a specific person and you can just use general kind of characteristics or categories of things if that, if that makes you feel more comfortable. But I can, and I can assure you that you're probably not going to say anything that I haven't heard from every other group that I presented to, but I think it's a helpful exercise nonetheless, if we have some volunteers. So what are the types of things that you found yourself noticing about the people I showed you? Anyone willing to speak up? Rich?
I noticed that they were predominantly in a school-type setting. Now, all excluding eight, though, all excluding.
Yes.
So they were students, teachers, maybe an administrator, something of that nature. They were all engaged. Even number three, that looked like they were listening. But they were all in some way engaged, interacting, something of that nature. So that's kind of my major takeaway.
Right. So in that, what I hear is you were noticing the setting that they were in. You were noticing potentially kind of what role in that setting they're playing, whether they're a student or a teacher, aside from Mark here, of course. You were maybe noticing characteristics about them, maybe facial expressions, body posture, what they were doing in the photo, et cetera, that suggested whether or not they were engaged in the activity that was happening around them or on the screen, et cetera. So that's a lot of things to notice about the folks that were in those pictures. Other things? Yeah, great.
Sure. I, I was noticing their emotions, which we saw in their faces. Some were either worried or concerned, some attentive, some happy, insecure. So there was a wide range of pride. Yeah. A wide range of, even in those photos, you could feel like they were conveying where they were at.
Right. And there's, so noticing their emotions or their perceived emotions. So we could say that literally as in, I was noticing whether they were furrowing their brow or smiling or doing literal things with their face that might suggest emotion. But I want to also point out there's another layer to what Greg is mentioning here, which is that we're interpreting too. Which is to say that we're looking at kind of what people were doing, their body position, their facial expression, and we're translating that into, I think this person looks anxious or I think they look engaged or they look proud. So there's a level of translation and interpretation that's happening. Anyone else want to chime in about things that you noticed? What about things about the characteristics of the people themselves? So not necessarily the environment they're in, but any characteristics of the people?
I jotted down things like female, male, young.
And that's okay to say. I want to say, that's okay to say, right? That we notice whether we notice gender, we notice age, we notice race, ethnicity. And I will say as a social psychologist, we notice these things often before we consciously notice them. Our brain notices them. And that's okay. So the variety of things, and I know there are other things you probably noticed, but I think we put on the table, the variety of things that you could notice, and I wasn't perfect about this this time, but about in fifteen to twenty seconds of exposure. And think about how much came to mind, the complexity of what came to mind. Some things very simple and descriptive, other things much more interpretive, right? But the point is that this could happen very, very quickly. And so the reason I like to start with this exercise when thinking about decision-making and really beginning to understand how biases, assumptions, expectations might affect our decision-making is that we do this all the time. And our brains are very well-trained and efficient at doing this. And in many circumstances, it's not a problem. And in fact, when we think about people watching, that's, that's a fun exercise, right? To look at somebody and say, what do I think that person's like? What do I think they're up to? So there's, this is just human nature. But of course, when we start to think about decision-making, that's when we start, want to start paying attention to, what are the assumptions I'm making? What expectations might I have? Might I have biases? Might I have expect, or stereotypes about different characteristics or social identity groups, et cetera, that might influence how I respond to this individual or make a, or make a decision that's going to affect someone from a particular identity or background, et cetera? So this last image here, who was the standout? So I will say, Rich, I did specifically Google for images related to schools and education, which is why there was that theme there. But I always include Mark. This is Mark Zuckerberg from Facebook, if you don't recognize him. And I always include Mark because he's a very good example of the downside of that efficiency that we have in processing information and perceiving other people. Which is if we relied on what we, what we, our schema or idea about what, say, a young white guy in a hoodie is like, if we don't know this is Mark Zuckerberg, we would miss the reality of Mark Zuckerberg. We wouldn't look at this, a guy that looked like this normally, most of us wouldn't, and think, oh, he's a multi-billionaire, founder, CEO, maybe the most important company in human history, right? He's super powerful, high status, et cetera. We would think, oh, maybe that's a local high school or college kid. And so the point is that what these assumptions, these expectations, these biases, stereotypes that we have, even though they allow us to process information very efficiently, what they can do is lead us to bad pun coming, miss the mark, right? Miss the specifics of the individuals in front of, in front of us for the efficiency of kind of our generalizations, our assumptions, et cetera. So I like to start there because I think it helps demonstrate that what we're talking about when we want to think about bias in decision-making is this kind of process operating in subtle ways and on many different dimensions. So if I polled each one of you privately and said, what did you notice about all of these people? There would be a lot of similarities and there would be some, definitely some differences. That one person really noticed these things, another person didn't mention that at all. So the other thing is that we want to get in touch as decision-makers with our own, I always say, our own constellation of biases, assumptions, and expectations, and work to kind of be aware of the potential for those to have an influence on our decision-making. All right? So that leads to, whoops, the question then of what is bias? And we can ask if, and I think a lot of people might think, okay, you started this, with this exercise, does that mean that what we were doing in that exercise, you're going to call bias? And the answer is it depends. And so I think that is, that's also the point, is that there's a lot of kind of this automatic implicit processing that we do. It's not inherently biased, what comes out of that system. It's not inherently biased, what comes to our minds automatically. But we want to be on the lookout for times when it is biased, especially when we're making consequential decisions. So a simple definition of bias, and this is, this is a little bit more applicable to thinking about our feelings about people, social groups, sometimes things, et cetera, but feelings in favor of or against. And what I want to emphasize about this definition is that when we think about bias, we tend to focus on the negative. So I, things we don't like, negative feelings. We do not, as a culture, tend to appreciate the many positive biases that we have or understand, for example, our preferences, which we, we think of as being positive, right? Our preferences as being biased. And what I'm going to encourage you to do is to put that on the spectrum of bias. That deviations from neutral, whether they're positive or negative in terms of valence of the feeling, they all can operate in exactly the same way to, in many cases, produce disparities, differential treatment or outcomes, or at least kind of lead processes to be kind of not as good or well-thought-out as we would like. So one of the reasons why it's helpful to expand that spectrum, to really think not only about prejudices, which are negative biases, but also preferences, which are many positive biases, as being on the spectrum of bias to be on the lookout for. Because once we label something a potential bias, we do understand, we should pay attention to it. So if someone says, you're biased, right? Or we think there's a bias here, people's ears perk up and they think, okay, that's something we have to look at. And so we want to make sure that we're capturing that full spectrum of potential biases, positive and negative. Now, I'm not, notice I'm not mentioning anything about the content of biases because biases can come from all kinds of different things. It can be related to all kinds of different things. And as I mentioned before, we don't all have exactly the same set of them. So what's important is to acknowledge the potential, to acknowledge the full spectrum, the positive to negative, and to do work on ourselves and as decision-making bodies to grapple with what we think the potential biases, assumptions, expectations are that might have an impact on our decision-making. So there's another category kind of of bias to be thinking about also, which isn't related to our feelings about things, but is related to various kind of cognitive shortcuts and defaults that we have to help us process information more efficiently. And those are cognitive biases, biases that are there to help us, again, process information efficiently. Sometimes are there honestly, from a social perspective or a kind of social relational perspective, to help us feel good about ourselves. So there's lots of biases that we as humans have or default, where we can turn it off or we can interrupt it. But if we let our brains go where our brains go, then we're going to see some of these things come into play. So these are some examples of cognitive biases that I think are particularly relevant, especially for decision-making bodies to be thinking about. And these, these are important ones. They're very common ones that are talked about with respect to decision-making. And I'm going to start with the one in the middle, the blind spot bias. This bias is actually the one that I personally consider the most important for most of us to grapple with. And that is that we have a bias toward being blind to our own biases. These blind spots don't make us blind to the potential for bias in others. And actually, humans in general are quite good at detecting the biases that others have. We're not very good at detecting our own. And that's not because we can't, it's because we often don't want to. And so the, we have a kind of default to not wanting to engage or think about the ways that we might have biases. We might make assumptions, we might have expectations, even if we recognize that everyone around us is doing the same thing. So we come to think of ourselves as exceptional in that way. So if we want to grapple with the potential for bias, all of us have to then grapple with our blind spots. So to get in touch with what I think my biases, assumptions, expectations might be and to be on the lookout for those when we're making decisions where those might be implicated in some way. Then there are classic information processing biases, like confirmation bias. And so this is a one that's talked about in almost, it's certainly relevant basically to every professional decision-making context. And confirmation bias basically says, we tend to default to seeking information that confirms whatever we believe already, we already believe to be true. So that we can see this in the world around us. And we might say that social media just amplifies confirmation bias because when we click on things that we like or we dismiss things that we don't like, we just get more and more of the stuff we like and less and less of the stuff we don't like. So it kind of plays on confirmation bias in a way. But in the context, a context that I think about a lot is in the legal space. There's lots of discussion about, for example, an investigation done by prosecutors or investigators, detectives. And the ways that once a suspect is settled on, we can see how cases, the evidence that's looked for, how evidence is handled in the case can be shaped by that initial conception. So we know from wrongful conviction cases, for example, that there are times when there was a settling on a suspect early on in a case. There was evidence that was available to suggest maybe that wasn't the right person and that evidence was ignored or underweighted in various ways. So we can find all kinds of situations where we, whether they're social, professional, interpersonal, et cetera, where we can see this operating. And again, the default is kind of go in that direction. And one of the reasons for that is it helps us feel good. Why would we want to confirm what we already believe to be true? Because it feels good to be right. And so this is all, so this is an example of an information processing bias. But we also want to be mindful of the ways that we, as humans, might default to engaging in certain behaviors or ways of thinking because it helps us feel good. It props up our egos, our self-esteem, et cetera. So I always say, anytime you feel like your kind of sense of self or your ego is on the line, those are also moments to be concerned about the potential for bias. So stereotyping is where we typically go when we think about bias, but it is one type of cognitive bias. So the broader bias kind of umbrella in many ways is cognitive biases, with stereotyping being another cognitive shortcut that we have to help us process information efficiently. And in some cases, depending on the content of the stereotype, to help us feel good about our group, maybe relative to another group. But nonetheless, it operates in a very similar way to many other cognitive biases. So I'll pause here and ask any questions about these cognitive biases or the broader definition of bias? Okay? So I do want to mention implicit bias because I think we hear a lot about using the language these days of implicit bias, non-conscious bias, unconscious bias. They're all generally referring to the same thing. And the basic idea of implicit bias or implicit cognition comes from the, the, the theory, the model, that we have basically two- model, that we have basically two pathways for processing information through the brain. So this is an oversimplified diagram, but on the diagram here, the top line shows the more deliberative, explicit, conscious processing system. It is the process that we experience as thinking. When I say I'm thinking about something, I'm referring to that top line, where maybe I have a decision to make, so I engage in deliberate conscious decision-making and processing about that, I gather information, I weigh that information in a very deliberate way, I come to a conscious decision about how to act or what my opinion is, et cetera. So implicit associations, implicit cognition, implicit bias comes from the idea of that bottom line, that we have a system that is on in our brains basically when we're, whenever we're awake and probably to some extent even when we're not, that is constantly processing information. It doesn't require us to be motivated, to pay attention. It is what allows us, in the first impressions task, if I showed you those photos for five seconds, most of you would still have something come to mind. And that is the automatic system that's allowing you to do that, that implicit system. And so that is, that's where the basic idea comes, that the implicit is just referring to the relative automaticity, the spontaneity of those responses. Now, when we think about bias interruption, what we're usually doing is just figuring out ways to become more aware so that we can interrupt those automatic processes. So I'll give an example from my own life experience. A few years ago, I had a neighbor that I did not like, and if you'd asked me, no one did, but if you'd asked me, do you have a bias related to this neighbor? As a psychologist, I probably would have said, yes, I probably do, but I hadn't thought about it before. And I was at a store, and I saw a woman who looked like my neighbor. It was not my neighbor, but she looked like her, and my gut reaction to her was, ugh, I hate you. Now, there's probably nothing that I could have done to stop myself from having that thought, but what I did is notice that I had it. And in that circumstance, there wasn't any way that I could affect her. She was just passing me in a store, but imagine if she had shown up as a student in my classroom or as a job candidate, and if I noticed that I had that reaction or didn't notice that I had that reaction, what, how might that affect how I would then respond to her in this context in which I might be able to make decisions that are consequential for her? So the idea of bias interruption is usually about becoming more self-aware and reflective, and in moments where we really think it's important, when we're making consequential decisions, to pay attention to what is coming to mind automatically for me, and to sort through the value and the relevance and the, you know, the, the, whether it's kind of the accuracy of the information that's coming to mind. All right? So any questions about the basic idea of implicit bias? Yeah?
No, I just have a comment, and I appreciate you sharing that example and it making me realize that it takes, you know, we all have this, right? Each one of us, everybody has this, it's very like you're saying, it's this, it's automatic, right? And so what comes to mind, that we're also all very busy people, and that this takes intentionality, and it takes hard work, and you have to disrupt it. So it, it almost makes us go, we have to get ourselves out of this comfort zone and disrupt this thinking, but sometimes it's, like you just, right? We just have so much going on that you just, it's easier to just settle back and say, okay, I'm not even going there, I'm not dealing with it. So I'm glad that you're kind of pushing us to be like, okay, we, it takes work, this is hard work, and we have to be intentional about it.
And it is more, it is more likely that we're going to fall back in our defaults, our shortcuts, when we're stressed, when we're tired, when we're busy. But I will say, one thing that we can do is we can become more automatic about those interruptions. So I would say, probably for someone like me, who thinks about this stuff and talks about it all the time, I might be a little bit better and faster at noticing thoughts, passing thoughts, and so we can practice. So one thing about this explicit implicit system is we can take things that were once explicit and we can become, they can become habitual. So I always use the example of, you know, you move to a new house and you have to figure out how to drive to work, obviously pre-GPS, or if you don't prefer to use GPS, you actually have to, you know, look it up or whatever, and then remember, not just have them tell you where to go. That when we start that process, the first couple of times we do it, we have to be very intentional about like, oh, I need to make this turn, keep an eye out for that landmark, do this and that. But very quickly, you can do that and not even realize how you got home, right? Like you don't have to think about it at all. And there are ways that we can habituate to noticing our, especially in certain moments or certain types of processes where I think it's important, paying attention and noticing what's coming to mind. And it doesn't always have to be as hard a work or as effortful as it might be if you're not used to doing it yet. So I want to, I want to offer that kind of encouragement too, that it does get easier, I think, in many ways, if we practice.
That's good to know, because there is, because it is difficult and we can settle back, but there's this intent versus impact, right? If we settle back, if I settled back, then there's consequence to how I, how my biases show up for somebody else in a decision-making and everyday role. So the impact of, of not doing the hard work is, can be detrimental to somebody else.
Definitely, that is definitely true. Any other questions or comments at this point? Okay. So if you do want to explore this further, man, I think it's because there's distance. Actually, I guess I took the slide out, but it is on the resource list that I shared. You can visit the project implicit dot com, and you can take some measurements of kind of cognitive, implicit associations and get a sense of what are things that you kind of relatively automatically associate with one another? So one, for example, might, that's very common, is, you know, people are often quicker to associate girls or women with the arts and science, or arts, and boys and men with science, right? So there's different variations of it, and there are ways to kind of explore those associations that aren't purely just like you trying to reflect on your own about it. And I'm not, for the sake of time, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but I'll point your attention to it so that you can look at it on the slides later, and if you want additional resources related to this, that I'm happy to provide. There are also resources on the resource list that are related to biases in educational settings that this is kind of drawn from. So there, I have a couple of slides here about the ways that biases might show up specifically in educational settings. The focus is, not surprisingly, predominantly on teachers and students interacting in the classroom, that's where the bulk of research has been done. But the point is that no matter how well-meaning and how much we care about our kids, our students, et cetera, the point is that these things still show up, and they require intentional kind of action against them and a kind of reflection about whether or not we're, we are producing experiences or outcomes for our students or our kids that we don't want to be. So that is what I'll say about that and encourage you kind of explore that information on your own. So where I want to close, in the time that we have left, is to make the connection even more strongly to biases and decision-making, to encourage us to think not only about decision-making from the context of, you know, what is the decision process that I'm engaging in, or what's the type of decision that needs to be made, but who am I interacting with as part of that decision-making process? Because that can also have implications for how decisions are made, the outcomes of decisions. And so it's important for us to remember the relational aspect of many of our decision-making processes, especially for a body like yours, where you engage with others as part of making your decisions. And so when we think about decision, by, the role of biases, assumptions, and expectations in our decision-making process, it's not just about reflecting on our own, it's about having everybody in this space reflect on their own, that everyone that's participating in the process, but it's also thinking about how you're affecting each other. And so there may be times, for example, when I might have a bias or assumption about Scott that might affect how I have an interaction with him and how we make decisions together. So thinking about that relational aspect too. And, and again, starting with the idea that we are all walking into the room with our own constellation of biases, assumptions, and expectations. There's not a person on earth who's not doing that when they go into an interaction. So giving some thought to how you all play off of each other, how you play off interactions with community members, et cetera, and how biases, assumptions, and expectations can affect not only those relationships or those, those interactions, but also the decisions that come out of them. So I want to leave you with, I think there's a delay because the computer's out there, sorry. With an encouragement to take time for each of you and as a body to think about the types of decisions you make as a school board, and what types of biases, assumptions, expectations, either as individuals or as a body, do you think might come into play? And this isn't, you know, again, this is just a reflection exercise to, for us to all to say, like, I'm bringing something to the table, I'm not perfect, I may not like everything I'm bringing to the table in some cases, but I can do something about it if we are upfront about it, we try to engage it, we reflect on it, we're aware of it. And so I wish we had time to have that discussion today, but I want to leave, you know, that prompt with you and encourage you all to think about that, both as individual, board members, as well as a, as a body. So I'm going to close with what can be done, with some ideas about what you can do. And the starting point, it may not surprise you, is awareness and acknowledgement. So being, getting comfortable, or getting more comfortable with the idea that there is potential for bias, that we all bring it to the table in various ways, they're not all the same, and what we can, if we want to do something about it, we have to be willing to kind of grapple with that as individuals and as decision-makers working together. So that means getting past blind spots, it means paying attention, it means looking for patterns, it may mean collecting data, depending on the kind of issues that you have questions about or concerns about, et cetera. Now, as you think about your decision-making processes as a body, one thing we know is that decision-making processes that have more accountability and transparency are ones that reduce bias. So I always talk about managed discretion. So too much discretion, we know is bad. So when people are making, are allowed to make completely subjective decisions where they're not accountable to anybody, there's no stated criteria, et cetera, those are situations that are ripe for bias. But I also want to acknowledge that it's, it's often very difficult to have, not only to have it, but to really work well within a system, a decision-making process in which you have no discretion. So the idea is figuring out what's the right way to calibrate that discretion, to calibrate the, the relative balance of kind of objective and subjective criteria, things like that, so that you're, have enough flexibility to make good decisions, but also have enough guardrails to make good decisions. So you can also look at your processes and think about, are there ways that we can be better about providing checks on our decision-making? Can, kind of taking time, even if it's just moments of reflection, to ask questions about our process, ask why we're thinking about the things that we are, the way that we are, why or how we've arrived at the decision that we did, and are we making sure that we articulate all of those reasons, even if it's just to each other, sometimes even if it's just to yourself? There's a lot of power in articulating or even anticipating that you might have to explain how you arrived at a decision to someone else. And the final piece is, of course, incorporation of diverse perspectives and people, and again, broad definition here, that it's not about, it has to be, you know, check the box on this, this type of person, this type of person, but that you have people who are approaching things in a different way, see the world in a different way, will reason in different ways, and that you can capitalize on that, but that you incorporate that difference in perspective, that diversity into the decision-making process. So it's not just that it's there and can be counted, but that people are able to contribute and have an impact on what is happening with respect to the decisions that are being made. So with that, I'll ask Clyde if he has any closing remarks.
I'd be very interested in your evaluation. I think I'm right, Dr. Bine, the board has approved DEI objectives. That's great, and I'm sure that in those objectives, you have goals, you're going to measure it. Always remind folks that, of the old Chinese proverb, a picture is worth a thousand words. I tell folks in my church, just because you carry a Bible to church doesn't mean you're living the life, meaning that we ought to see it in the lives of people. And so we should see evidence, the results of DEI. It's your program, your objective, no outsiders, not mine, yours. But I do want to commend you, Dr. Bine, because you are a model. A lot of school districts are not doing what you're doing, and I think this is going to pay off for you, because Arlington Heights is changing. If you can't see it, then I don't know where you've been, I see it. And it's going to continue to change. And our youngsters, when they leave the eighth grade, go into 214, it will not be the same experience, but we don't want it to be new either, shocking, you know? So thank you so much for inviting us, it's been a pleasure. Dr. Bine?
Thank you. And again, I want to also thank the board for asking for some diversity, professional development. This is a start on a journey, and we'll have many more conversations, and as you know, through the strategic plan that you adopted, it has diversity, equity, and inclusion, and global citizenship woven throughout it, and we will be doing all we can as we report on that over the next four years to make sure we're highlighting how diversity, equity, and inclusion is becoming the picture, and that we're able to demonstrate our work on that, and we look forward to your questions about that as we bring our strategic plan updates to you, even starting next month. Are there any other questions from the board at this time from the foundation that Dr. Perry and Reverend Brooks have shared with us?
No, thank you, sorry. Thank you both for, for providing the information. It's like all things, you may hear it once, you have to hear it a thousand times before it actually starts sinking in, and I appreciate a lot of the discussion on the bias, because that's something that unless you take pause and reflect, you, I wrote, you're, you're living bias, right? You know, you have to really reflect on that and go, why did I make that choice? Why did I make the decision, or why did I make that type of action? So thank you for, again, bringing that back up to us.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Perry and Reverend Brooks, for coming, and we appreciate the, well over an hour that we, we spent the time together, thank you. Moving on, we have community input, and I believe I have one blue slip in front of me, and this is for Andrew Sinclair Georges.
Good evening to you all, thank you all very much. I probably have another three minutes that I could go just from hearing what they had to say, but obviously I have a timeframe, so I'll be brief with my comments as possible. First, I'd like to thank you all, Dr. Bine, the district, the board members, for everything you're doing with this DEI initiative. I find it very important, not just for my own family, but for us as a community. We see how important it is to facilitate lifelong learners who grow and succeed within our own community, and I think that's also very important. As myself, a parent of a multicultural and multilingual child who doesn't receive those services through the district for English language learning, but we do speak multiple languages at home, I see the enthusiasm and the engagement that occurs when our child comes home and sees these factors reflected in the daily rhythm at school. As a product myself of a multicultural, multilingual upbringing, I can also attest to both the joy and the engagement that feeling acknowledged and represented really brings. Sorry, you guys got to go. I was very fortunate to grow up having a very diverse group of friends and coworkers over the years, and I can also attest to the disconnect and the feelings of timidity and disquiet that can result from not having one's uniqueness acknowledged. I've also been the unique one in a large group and know how difficult it can be to thrive without the inclusion and acknowledgement of my own uniqueness in that situation. I also know that such inclusion has led to great learning and growth opportunities for all involved, and obviously, this is something that's hard. It, it takes constant work, it takes effort, like Gina said, it's not a single moment in time, it's not a single thing that we do, it's something that we do on a daily basis. Just bringing up thinking about my own biases and the way I grew up and the things that I thought at times, and then had certain experiences, it was like, oh my goodness. I thought at times, and then had certain experiences, it was like, "Oh my goodness, I have to be cognizant of that, I have to pay attention to what I'm thinking," and still to this day, right? There's still biases that, even once you've confronted them, you still see that you have them sometimes, or at least then you can acknowledge them and address them and react to them, and take them into consideration. But I also feel now more so than ever in a long time, conversations celebrating both our shared values and also the diverse ones that make us unique are so important to facilitate the ability to come together and thrive as a community, and to really have the necessary and difficult discussions, like, "This isn't easy, it's not a thing that we can just go, 'Oh, okay, I got it, I'm done.'" That we really tackle this while educating the future leaders of our representative democracy, right? We represent, you all board members represent the community, whether you look, or speak, or worship, or learn, or anything, the same way, we're all representing people who are outside of ourselves, right? Even myself here, being a member of the community, I'm not just representing myself, right? So, basically, at the end, I'd just like to say that the, this DEI really promotes critical thinking, whether it's just on our biases and just on the things that we take for granted. It's, it's really a thread that weaves itself through everything that we do, from, you know, what we want to eat in the morning, to, you know, how we treat our relatives and our neighbors, and the conversations that we have with people, whether we agree or disagree with them. I really think that this, this helps the conscious decisions that we make on a daily basis, and I think that that's extremely important to create the lifelong learners that are really going to move our society and move us forward, right? That's, those are our futures, so. Thank you all, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your time, thank you, keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you. I do not have any more slips, but anybody else in the audience would like to speak? All right, with that, thanks again for coming. This concludes the committee of the whole meeting. Do I need a motion to adjourn, or, I'm not, committee?
We need a motion to adjourn.
Can we get a motion to adjourn this meeting, please?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we close this committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you, Rich, do a second. Thank you, Gina, all in favor? Hi. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming, and we'll see you in about, I say, thirty, thirty-five minutes.